And we are live.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the May 29, 2024 Special Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Mike Murphy, the Chair. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission meeting is being brought to you courtesy of Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your mics turned on for the roll call. Deb?
Thank you. Commissioner Kues.
Here.
Mr. Batazzo.
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Here.
Commissioner Gels.
Here.
Commissioner Rashis.
Here.
Vice Chair Rigdon.
Here.
And Chair Murphy.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioners, before we get started this evening, I'd like to take a moment to thank Commissioners Boatsman and Gels for their work on the Planning Commission. Chris Gels was appointed to fill an unexpired term on June 9 of last year. Chris brought to the Planning Commission a fresh perspective, enthusiasm, enthusiasm, and a willingness to read work product, work, the work product that we were handed off by staff carefully and with an eye toward making it clearer and more concise. The latter was not always appreciated, but nevertheless, it was well received by, by many of us. Rather than being reappointed, Chris is an unfortunate victim of the restructuring of the Planning Commission. I'm afraid that he is an example of the independent citizen volunteers that will be replaced by what I believe at least some hope may be more malleable paid members. Carolyn was first appointed to the Planning Commission on June 5 of 2017 and reappointed again in 2021. In those seven years, she worked on many, many consequential issues for the island. In those seven years, Carolyn also, I have to admit, frustrated more than one Planning Commission Chair. And you know, that, that was sort of her job, I think. And a few members too. Has several former Planning Commission members have shared Carolyn processes things differently. It is not that she failed to read the material or came unprepared for meetings, has at least a few people believe. To the contrary, she does read everything very carefully. She simply preferred a different method of reaching decisions, not one shared by everyone, and a method that at times prolong discussion also due in part to our less rigid process. On the substance of our work, however, Carolyn was, was well informed, always willing to contribute, and most importantly, was a tireless advocate for protecting our island's environment and quality of life. For that, she deserves our thanks for her years of service. My concern about these two departures after watching the council ignore the outpouring of opposition to its restructuring plan is that the city will have an even more difficult time finding qualified volunteers willing to serve on this and probably other commissions. As former Mayor Alan Merkel observed, if the city is not attracting qualified candidates, it needs to look at what it is doing to create that climate. I don't see that happening very soon, but hopefully it will. Commissioner, other commissioners and staff, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Victor?
So first to Commissioner Boatsman. I have appreciated, appreciated your, your passion around the Planning Commission, your depth of knowledge, your historical knowledge, and, and the expertise that you've brought to the commission. I think that you've been a valuable member of the commission and I appreciate your time with us. On a, on a more personal note, in the brief time that we met in person, my chair was sitting next to Commissioner Boatsman's chair and I appreciated the chocolate that we would share, pass back and forth between us during, during these meetings. So thank you, thank you for your lengthy service. Commissioner Gels, who hasn't been on as, quite as long as Commissioner Boatsman, I appreciate your ability to jump in, in the middle of a process where we had already begun working on the call plan and I I appreciate your enthusiasm to jump in with both feet and get involved immediately. I've already, always appreciated your perspective and, and appreciated your service as well. So thank you to the both of you.
Allison?
Well, a lot of nice things have already been said. I don't need to repeat that. I just wanted to say thank you to both Carolyn and Chris for your service to the city and to the community. It's been a pleasure to work with you both, Carolyn, for many years now, and Chris, meeting you more recently. But I think you both added a lot to the work of the commission and contributed, you know, many valuable insights. And I hope and expect that you both will stay involved with this work through, you know, with a different hat on as a community member. Hope to see you at public appearances sometime in the future. Thank you.
Adam?
Well, I didn't get to know Commissioner Goals as well. I will say thank you to Commissioner Boatsman for, yes, the Brazilian chocolate. It's wonderful. And also for just the, the discussions and information that you've shared with me. You know, your willingness to consider information and viewpoints that differ from yours and have a respectable, a respectful disagreement in some cases, and sometimes we come to, you know, a resolution in the middle. So I, I thank you for those discussions, that information and, and the chocolate, like Victor.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Once again, thank you both and hopefully we'll make this a show. Carolyn?
Yeah, I did, I didn't want to respond. Of course, I'm a little late to find my hand to raise. But I just want to say that, you know, I've just really appreciated the opportunity to provide, you know, direct input to the city regarding land use decisions all these years. It's great to live in a country, you know, where you can do that without getting locked up. So we're pretty lucky and I really appreciate working with the staff and very high quality professional output and, and guidance for commissioners all the way through. I've always felt like, you know, we really had terrific information to work with. It's been great, really a privilege working with you and privileged working with all of you and all the various commissioners I've worked with over the years. It's been really great. Good luck to everyone. Thank you, Mike, for sharing. So, all right. Thanks. Thanks for your comments, everyone.
Chris?
Yeah, no, I wasn't quite sure what this was going to be on the Planning Commission and, you know, I was pleased to be part of the group. You know, we had our, our differences from time to time, but I enjoyed working with everybody. I think, you know, we're, we're all here for the same reason, which is try to do our best for the city and, and I really did appreciate. I got a lot of good support from the staff and I appreciated everybody's patience with me. So, you know, I'll keep my fingers crossed for you all and we'll see what happens.
Okay. Okay. Our first item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern, except those items scheduled for a public hearing later this evening. Is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
Chair, it's our 4:00 PM this evening. We did not have anyone that signed up to speak.
Okay. Okay. And the first item of special business is the Planning Commission Agenda Bill PCB 2411, Com Plan Periodic Review Public Hearing. This public hearing is to receive comments on amendments to the com plan as part of the 2024, 2044 Periodic Review. Individuals wishing to make public comment on this agenda item may do so in person or by using Zoom. The public hearing is now open as of 6:14 PM. Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for public comment that wishes to address the commission?
Yes, sir, we have one. And that would be Mr. Goldbach.
Okay. Those wishing to provide public testimony will speak audibly. State your name for the record. Limit and limit your comments to three minutes. Please call, Deputy City Clerk will call on you by name or telephone number. When is your turn to speak? So Deb, go ahead.
Okay, I've requested that Mr. Goldbach join us. And Mr. Bobak, are you with us? I see that you're unmuted. Let me check in with somebody on the other side and see what is going on. Just one moment, please. Believe that, believe Mr. Goldbach. Believe Mr. Goldbach is at the community center. I have someone checking right now. Oh, here we go. Mr. Goldbach, we can, you have audio, but we can't hear you. So I suspect something is muted on your end. You also appear to be showing us a video as well, but we cannot see you. There we go. We can see you, but we can't hear you. So you must be muted on your end. We still can't hear you, sir. No. Can you hear us? Okay, he can hear us.
Deb, and I, I can't see him either. Are we supposed to be able to see him or can you only?
You should be able to see him. I can see him on my screen.
I'm sorry, can you see him?
I can see him. I can see.
You might need to toggle the gallery to the right on the top of your screen.
Got that. Thanks.
We still can't hear you, Matt. Would you like to try and call in? Use your phone. I'm sorry, sir. I wish I could read your lips. I want to give him an opportunity to speak if he'd like, so.
Sure.
He's going to attempt to call us using the phone number. We can't hear you, Matt. I have Mr. Goldbach on speaker and we're going to see if this works. You tell me if you hear it.
One, two, three, can you hear me?
Yeah, now.
We've got some feedback, so let me fix that. Let me try again, Matt.
One, two, three.
We still have feedback. You, do you hear the feedback or is, Matt, it's on your side?
It's on my side, yeah.
You need to mute your speakers. I need you to mute the speakers on your computer. Or on the bottom right-hand corner, you see the little speaker on your computer. Not on your Mac. You can go to the other room. Okay, hold on. I'll put you back on speaker. All right, coming up with workarounds.
Can you hear me now?
They can hear you. They can hear you.
Okay. All right, anyway, I, I was just calling in to state that I'm opposed to this process as, as it's going on. I sent written comments to the, to the commission and fundamentally.
Matt, you went silent.
Hello?
Okay, try again, but you need to leave, get away from your computer.
I'm doing it right now.
All right, don't go too far because we lost you last time.
Yeah, I know. I, I don't know where we, anyway, part of my statement was I'm calling in opposition to moving forward without more residents' participation. The packet that came out on Thursday last week with a, with a holiday in the middle makes it reasonably impossible for the average person to take that in and make intelligent comments right now. I, I think the confusion amongst the residents right now is we understood this was going to be a, a surgical change. And if, if, if a surgical change anticipated seeing these are the things we're changing specifically to meet state and county requirements. And that would be pretty easy for, for people to digest and understand that's what's happening. It appears that we're doing something significantly larger than that. And I think there, there lies some of the, some of the concern and confusion. The council meeting led us to believe it was going to be, this, this activity was going to be different than it seems to be right now. So essentially, that's my, my comment is I think that we, we need to have a little bit more involvement of the residents before we move forward. And with that, I'll let you get back to your main. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, is there any further testimony?
I don't have anyone signed up. We do have some individuals that appear to be in the Slater Room at the community center. I don't know if there's a desire for anyone to speak there.
Do we have someone there that can check that?
I'm checking right now. Give us just one moment. We do apologize for the technical issues tonight, but I appreciate everyone's patience. And I will know whether, whether or not we need if anyone wishes to speak in just a moment.
My name is Lucille Zaire. I'm a resident here on Mercer Island. And my only comment is that I think it would have been nice if we had had more resident input prior to the decisions that were made. And my understanding is now that it's really too late to change some of those. That's all I really have to say. Did anybody else wish to speak?
Andrea, can you get Lucille's dispenser for last name, please?
I'll get it. Thanks.
Good evening. This is Senator Wellman, Lisa Wellman. And I'm here with a few people at the community center to have an interaction, I assume, about the, the this planning commission report. This is an extremely vital piece of feedback to the legislature, to the planning for the state going forward for our community and others will be doing it for their communities. My, my hope was that I was coming to a meeting in person with all of you and would have an interaction with all of you about the, the report that you've put together. It doesn't sound as though that was anybody's intention. I think all of us in the room, there's not that many, but all of us in the room were expecting to be with you. And actually, given the importance of the report and, and this interaction, it's somewhat disconcerting and distressing that we're not together and not really understanding why that would be the case. This room certainly is large enough for all of us to be in one place. Anything else anybody want to say? We're all in agreement about this. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
That is everyone, Chair.
Thank you. There being no further testimony, the public portion of this hearing is now closed as of 6:33 PM. So now I will welcome Adam Zach, Senior Planner, to give us a presentation regarding the first of what should be two motions tonight.
Yes, thank you. Let me get my screen shared here. So, one more thing. Here. So tonight we'll be taking a look at the comprehensive plan overall and get through this, this process of the public hearing. So the purpose tonight is, one, to, to hear the public testimony we just heard. Two, to consider additional amendments to the comprehensive plan. And then three, we're, we're ultimately driving toward reaching a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council. So this is the, all of the process that we've been engaged in up to this point has been kind of leading to your making a recommendation. your making a recommendation to the city council for them to consider later this year. We're updating the comprehensive plan because we're required to update the plan under the Growth Management Act. And this update is required so that we can extend the planning horizon of the comprehensive plan through the next 20 years. So the plan will really cover 2024 through 2044. Another reason that we're updating the plan is that the Growth Management Act or GA has some new requirements, particularly for housing that have been enacted by the legislature in the last few years. So a lot of the updates that are in the plan are driven by those those new requirements that have been enacted since the last time the city updated its comprehensive plan. And all of this, the periodic review needs to be completed before the end of the year. So we have a deadline of December 31st of 2024. So this is getting us toward getting an updated plan adopted prior to that deadline. To, I wanted to start by looking at some of the process that we've gone through to date. Just as a refresher, you know, this has been a process that's been ongoing since the spring of 2022. So I think it's helpful to just kind of see where we've been and how we've gotten to where we're at tonight. So it, as I mentioned, we began this project in March of 2022 when the city council adopted the scope of work, the public participation plan and the schedule for the project. And that really kind of laid out the track that we were going to get on for this process. At the same time, or shortly after the scope of work was adopted, we began doing some public outreach for the economic development element. That's a new element that was added to the scope of work. We were requested to draft an economic development element through this process. And because it's a new element, we undertook some additional public outreach for that element, which that really led into the summer of '22 where we held a community workshop related to the economic development element. And we held an online survey that summer to gather some input on economic development. And then in that, in that time too, we began meeting, holding meetings with the Economic Development Work Group, which was a subcommittee of the Planning Commission and City Council. And they, that subcommittee, the Economic Development Work Group, they really were the ones that put together that initial draft of the economic development element. So we wanted to get them in on the initial draft from the get-go, get the input from Planning Commission and City Council on that. At the same time, we convened the Housing Work Group, which was also included in that scope of work to develop a housing element, an updated housing element. Because of the legislation, namely House Bill 1220, which was enacted in 2021, we knew that we were going to need to do some pretty substantial updates to the housing element. And so in that scope of work and public participation plan, that included the creation of this housing work group to work on that draft of an updated housing element. The summer of '22 also saw the beginning of the Planning Commission's review of these elements. At that time, you took up the land use element and the transportation element. Looking at those elements because they were, they didn't necessarily need as substantial amendments to keep up with our or stay up to date. As we found out later in the process, there were some consistency amendments that needed to be made to the land use element in particular. So we picked that up later, but we'll get there soon. Then in the fall of '22, we continued to, you continued to review the land use and transportation element. The Economic Development Work Group really started to dig into that drafting process on the economic development element. And then also the city council and planning commission received a joint briefing on an economic analysis and a housing needs assessment. And those were two reports kind of summarizing some of the data around housing needs and the local economy. And then following that in the winter of '22, heading into 2023, the Economic Development Work Group continued their work and refined that draft element. And then the Planning Commission reviewed the capital facilities element and the utilities element. Then leading into the spring of 2023, the Economic Development Work Group was still plugging away on that draft element. And eventually, at the end of that spring, they delivered an initial draft for the Planning Commission's review in the summer of 2023. Also, in the summer of 2023, the city council approved an addendum to the scope of work, which added additional tasks to the update of the housing element, primarily in response to the guidance that was issued from the Department of Commerce around House Bill 1220 and complying with some of the targets that were set in that bill. So once we saw that guidance from the Department of Commerce, it became clear that we needed to expand the scope of work specifically for the housing element. And so the city council reviewed that and gave us direction in the summer of 2023. Moving forward in the fall of '23, that's when the Planning Commission took up the Economic Development Work Group's draft of the economic development element. And they continue to refine it. You reached the public review draft, the draft that we're looking at tonight in the fall of 2023. Then in the winter of 2023, the city council received a briefing on the land capacity analysis supplement and the racially disparate impacts evaluation. These were two of the reports that were added by the scope of work addendum that was adopted in the summer of 2023. And those two reports are based on that commerce guidance. And they gave us some additional information about how we might accommodate our housing needs as assigned by King County. And also how we can address the new requirement from House Bill 1220 that the housing element address racially disparate impacts in housing policy. The winter of 2023 and into 2024 also saw the Housing Work Group resume its work on the housing element. They began drafting based in large part on the findings from the land capacity analysis supplement and the racially disparate impacts evaluation. The Housing Work Group began putting together that updated draft of the housing element. And then that eventually came forward to the Planning Commission in March. Then the Parks and Recreation Commission also in 2023, it's actually the winter of '24, the Parks and Recreation Commission began reviewing the open space zone, which the Planning Commission just was reviewing in its last couple of meetings. And that brings us up to now, to today. So through the spring, the Planning Commission worked on that Housing Work Group draft of the housing element, refining that a bit. You also took a look at the Parks and Open Space Elements in, I guess that was April now. And then the Open Space Zone at the end of April and leading into May. There also, we had the open house on May 1st, which was an open house to gather public input on the comprehensive plan update before us today. And that included an online survey that was available May 1st through May 20th, which PCB 2412 actually had the results from that, included the results from that online survey. And that brings us all the way up to, literally today on May 29th, we're conducting the Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. We plan the legislative process, we expect to continue at least till June 5th. But it can continue all the way through June 12th. June 12th is our target to arrive at the recommendation, your recommendation to the city council regarding the comprehensive plan update. But that's not the, that's not the final step in the process. So we still have some additional process once the Planning Commission, once you make a recommendation to the city council. There's the city council review of that recommended draft. So there currently, we're planning to have an initial look with them in July. And then they would have their two, at least two touches following that in in the fall of this year. There's also this other piece where there are some additional code amendments that are going to be required to implement some of the policies in the housing element. And so this summer, we're going to reconvene the Housing Work Group and begin working on those draft code amendments, the development code amendments, so that they can be adopted concurrently with the plan. And then our code and our development, or our code and our comprehensive plan will then be consistent. And the Planning Commission will take up that recommended draft of code amendments. We're expecting to bring that forward to you all in September. And then that'll lead through to adoption of the entire plan before the before the deadline on December 31st. So we're at a pretty major milestone now, but we still have quite a bit of work left to do, particularly on, for you, it'll be on the code amendment part, but we also have the council review through the process here. So as I mentioned, and feel free to stop me at any time if any of you have questions. I'm kind of rolling here, but if there are any questions, please let me know.
Angie?
Hi, Adam. I think just building on what you just presented to us about our timeline and what's happened and also kind of responding to kind of comments or questions about the volume of information that people have had the opportunity to review. Just a quick question, like let's just take the economic development element, for example. The version that's up on the Let's Talk site right now that has been available for review, how long has that particular version been available for review?
The public review draft was, the Planning Commission arrived at that draft in November of this year.
Okay. Wait, that's not possible because November
November of '23, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. So that version is the version that's been up on Let's Talk after we deliberated, had our back and forth and landed on the version that we landed on before we moved on to our next element.
Right. So for that element in particular, that's a good example. So you, the Planning Commission took that up in June of last year. And then there was a touch at July, September, and October on that draft. And at each point along the way, it was available for public comment too.
Okay. That I remember. You know, I think one of the things I'm just both asking to make sure I understand, but also potentially providing clarity for folks who are paying attention is, are the versions of the documents that are up that contribute to the volume of work, are those versions, those versions have been up since we've basically finished our work? And I recognize that, for example, housing was recent. So the version of it's probably only been up for a month. It didn't just go up this week. I'm just, I'm just curious to make sure, like I know when Deb sends out her permit bulletin or her weekly bulletin, I go click and I go look and I try and keep up with it. It's a lot of information, but I just want to make sure I understand that as we've been progressing as a planning commission and we've completed these elements that we've been reviewing for the better part of a couple of years, that the most recent version that's been summarized for both us as a commission and the public to look at this month have been up there for longer than just our agenda length.
Yes. All of the public review drafts have been on the, on the project website, the Let's Talk page.
Yeah.
Posted on there and on the older agendas too.
Okay. I figured as much, you know, I did spend a fair amount of time trying to cross-check some things while I was reviewing and recognize that I just don't, didn't want to look back at like three versions over the last year. So I was just going to ask you to answer that question for me rather than cross-check all of them. So it sounds accurate. I just want to check on that. That's all, that's all for now, but I will be back later. Thanks.
Okay.
Kate?
Hi, thank you for recognizing me, Chair. And I, I'm a little bit concerned about, again, having read the public comment, I'm a little bit concerned about how some of the work here is being characterized as whose product and what product and when. And for example, in the timeline we just went through, we talked about the Housing Work Group beginning in summer of 2022. We really didn't do any work until the beginning of this year. We had three meetings that were less than two hour each. Materials came a day in advance. And those meetings were led by council. Those meetings were led by council. They had a strong voice from the mayor and three council members, the two planning commissioners, I was one of them, had very few comments. And what I'm seeing is I'm seeing this housing element characterized as something drafted by the Planning Commission, but it wasn't. It was drafted by staff. And commissioners had a very small amount of time to respond to those drafts and statements and reviews. And the housing element was moved forward by three council members. So seeing, it's confusing to me, I think, and it's very confusing to the public and not very transparent to suggest that it's a planning commission draft when it was largely written by staff and approved by three council members to move forward in this process. Given the change to the Planning Commission by the mayor and that the mayor was a leader on this process, I find the characterizations in the emails, online and whatnot, just very interesting. I will say too, related to what Commissioner Batazza was just talking about, the draft housing element that seems to be the source of most of the comments was published on March 28th. One of the members that spoke, or one of the residents that spoke tonight attended that meeting and made comments on that draft. So again, very confused about some of the feedback we're getting about lack of transparency. These have been open documents. Folks have been invited to meetings. On March 29th, the Comprehensive Plan Open House was announced. And it's been two months that the housing element's been up online. So I am very confused by the tenor of comments. I'm very confused by the characterization that this is a these are commission-written plans. We are responding and reviewing and approving and making suggestions and looking for consistency. Yeah, it's interesting. I'm a little confused, but maybe I'll be enlightened later. We'll see. Thank you for listening to my comments.
All right, I'll keep rolling here. So as we've touched on a little bit, there was also on your agenda was Planning Commission Bill 2412. This, that bill pretty much just provided some of the background information to help you make an informed decision as we move forward. And one of the key pieces of that was the, the information about that public participation that we conducted earlier in the process. So exhibit one of that Planning Commission bill was the online survey results. That was, this is the survey that accompanied our open house on May 1st. And that survey was open from May 1st to May 20th and gathered 87 responses. And most of the questions on that survey were focused on implementation. So we, we were asking, the questions were designed to get at a little bit more of like, what are we going to do with this next step as we implement the plan moving forward? So you'll see that some of the findings, the draft findings that staff has recommended are tied back to those survey responses. And they're really directed at kind of how we, how we'll implement the plan moving forward. And I'll touch on findings here in a minute. The other piece of public input that was included with PCB 2412 was the multifamily housing online survey results. This was a survey that we conducted earlier this year from February to March. And it was focused on getting some input to supplement the findings in that racially disparate impacts evaluation directed at some of the displacement findings that were in that report. So So um, we found that there were some places at risk of displacement and we wanted to find some more information about the nature of that displacement risk. Again, kind of focused on as we implement the plan, how should we go go about implementing it? What are some of the things that we can do um to address some of that displacement risk?
Uh, Angie.
Thank you. Um, A- Adam, one of the pieces I noticed just in the public feedback in the last few days has been, it will even tonight. Concern about the lack of public participation. Um, a- and I wonder, uh, because like even I'm concerned about the lack of public participation, although I can't fault the city or anybody for it because it's a lack of the public participating. Um, you know, I even lobbied my own neighbors, asked people, please come provide comment or get online and just fill out the survey. I couldn't even get my thirteen-year-old to fill out the survey, actually. She she politely declined um for another conversation some other day. But uh, you know, I I've noticed uh a lack of public participation. I read through the results. I noted that eighty-plus or minus people participated. Thank you to every person who did. I deeply appreciate hearing that feedback and looking at it and uh, the city parsing it out. And I wish I heard more voices. I am curious, um, if you could just recount very quickly, if you have the information available, the variety of different ways that you guys engaged in outreach to recruit folks to give feedback. Like, I know there was an online survey. I know Commissioner Hughes pointed to a public hearing we had. Um, I know I talked to like thirty people, which is not close. What is that, one percent of the thirty thousand people that live here? Um, but I I'm curious if you can give just quick stats. Um, because I'm very curious as a commissioner who is really trying to recruit public opinion, um, you know. I I'm sure, I know you did outreach. I saw it and I was able to forward it or try and attempt recruitment myself, but can you recount for us what you guys did?
So in terms of the open house, um, we we published notice um in the Mercer Island Reporter. Um, we published notice on the um on the the project website. There was also, uh, we put notice in our weekly bulletin or uh the CPD bulletin and the um, and the Mercer Island Weekly Newsletter that the city distributes. Um, there were also several social media posts uh promoting the May first um open house. And um, the same can be said for the for the survey itself. Um, we had some social media posts uh for the survey and then also um put it in the uh Mercer Island Weekly. Um, so that's that's for just for that open house. Uh, we did similar efforts for when we held the Economic Development Open House or Community Workshop in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, and then also for the online survey that we conducted then. Um, I would I would also say, hey, you know, that um, there was also a public participation plan that was adopted with the scope of work and that kind of guided all of our um public participation out um output that we, um, that's not the right word, our public participation efforts uh through the process.
Do you, do you know if it was, uh, I know the city doesn't officially utilize Nextdoor. Um, nor do I necessarily advocate for it, but do you know if it was unofficially uh linked or passed around in Nextdoor?
Um, I don't. I could find that out, though. Our our social media is handled by, I see Allison jumping on.
I was gonna say, I believe it was posted both on Nextdoor and Facebook.
Okay, fine. Okay, great. Just questions. Thank you.
Adam, is it, uh, it's correct that uh the Growth Management Act lays out statutory requirements for outreach to promote public participation, correct?
It does, yes.
And I assume the city complied with all of those requirements?
Yes. Uh, Kate. As far as I know, I should say, I'm not a lawyer, so I'll say as far as I know, in my opinion, yes.
Okay, uh, Kate, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to share that I did post the meeting. I did not receive social media hits on it, but I don't engage in a lot of social media. Um, I did personally post it because I wasn't seeing things on um Mercer Island neighbors. And I know that um, and and I know that some folks posted it out on other sites as well, shared my post on other groups. Um, so there was quite a bit of social media um advertisement about it. So I don't think it's a lack of advertisement. I just wanted to state also, um, I do a lot of public engagement with my job at King County. And there is extremely low public participation these days, and I think it's ubiquitous problem. It's not for lack of trying. Um, and I will just share that the one success I have had recently was sending a mailer to every single home within five hundred feet of a river body, which was quite expensive. Um, but we got a fifty percent participation response, three hundred people out of, or no, not fifty percent, it was twenty percent, twenty percent response, which is huge. It's a lot better than um I think we have one-tenth of one percent here, Angie, to do that math. One-tenth of one percent of the community responding is a not a target that I think uh i- is a good sign. So either people are happy with the way the city is doing their work, um, they don't feel a crisis. Um, or folks just aren't interested in the public process. It's uh, a- again, like Angie, I uh Angela, sorry, Commissioner Batazzo. I I tried to get people to come and people had other things to do. So it's not for lack of trying and it's not for lack of outreach.
Uh, Adam.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I I see we've got some public comments. I think we've had a chance to kind of commute put our comments here, but my impression, I'd like to politely suggest that we move along. Uh, we do have public comments to look through um from the review um and look at the comprehensive plan, whether or not the rules were followed or whether or not those rules are suitable. I I think that's outside of our purview um as a planning commission and definitely not on today's agenda. So I kind of respectfully like to suggest we move along.
Well, I think we're about prepared to do that. Carolyn, did you have a comment or are you, okay? Adam?
All right.
And then, no, move along.
Yeah. Um, so the other thing that was com- uh included with PCB twenty-four twelve was a consistency review. Um, and so this was made up of three documents that looked at um potential policy gaps between um the policies in the comprehensive plan, the proposed policies in the comprehensive plan. And then the regional and countywide planning policies um that uh apply to the city. Um, it looked, it went through each of those multi-county planning policies and the and the countywide planning policies and checked to make sure that we had addressed um those in our policies. Um, and it did i- identify a couple of gaps, a couple of places where we might be able to um increase the consistency or or make strengthen the consistency between our plan and the regional and countywide plans. And that was what was included in that policy gap summary, which was Exhibit Three of the Planning Commission Bill. And the consistency review is is important because we're required to make sure that our plan is consistent with our neighboring jurisdictions' plans. Um, this is a requirement under the Growth Management Act. Um, and that's really what those CPPs, the countywide planning policies and the multi-county planning policies, which are adopted by Puget Sound Regional Council. Both of those sets of planning policies are intended to make sure that um, you know, neighboring jurisdictions within that that area have consistent plans that are, we're all, um, that all of the cities and the counties are kind of pulling on the oar together. Um, and so again, that consistency review looked at those CPPs and MPPs to make sure that we were consistent with that. And then um you'll find in PCB twenty-four thirteen um in Table One, there are some staff-recommended uh amendments that would close those gaps that were identified. Um, so we provided those in the table there. Um, and you'll see, we can, we can look at that a little closer uh when we get to the recommended motions. Um, there was also um an internal consistency review that was included with um twenty-four twelve. Oh, I'm sorry, I got, I have duplicate uh slides here. Uh, but there was an internal consistency review as well. Um, it's not on the slide here. Um, but that was looking at our policies within the plan to make sure that none of them were conflicting. So we didn't have, say, like, a a policy telling us to do one thing and then a policy telling us to do the opposite. Um, so our consultants from Kinley Horn um took a look at our policies throughout the plan and identified um places where there might be um some conflicts there. Um, in general, um, there there were a couple of conflicts and there are some staff-recommended um amendments to co- to resolve those conflicts in, again, in Table One of PCB twenty-four thirteen. Included with uh PCB twenty-four thirteen was a set of draft findings. And the findings really describe why the city is acting on the matter before it and and also provide some of the expectations for implementation. Um, so they're they're a non-regulatory piece of your recommendation that you can forward to the city council. So if there's something that um a- as we go through the plan, if there's something that you feel needs to be memorialized but doesn't necessarily need to be a policy within the plan, um, you can make that as a finding if the if the Planning Commission um agrees to make those findings. Um, in in the draft, you'll see Sections One through Three of those findings were prepared by staff. And they map map out how the comprehensive plan satisfies the procedural requirements in our own city code. And then also um how they, how the comp plan addresses all of the content required by the Growth Management Act. So it goes through those staff findings, kind of go through and say, you know, the RCW requires us to do this and we have this in the plan. I'm going to go through through the whole plan there. So uh, what I also included uh seven recommended findings that can address some of the public input and some of those policy gaps. Um, and those were included in twenty-four thirteen, Table Two. And when we get to the recommended motions, you'll see motion number two would would um address those recommended findings. So throughout this whole process, as I mentioned, you can make your own findings in Section Four of that document. And those can appro- provide that additional context um that you may want the the city council to know about the process or about um how you would like to see something implemented. Um, then those get memorialized and we can use that to help kind of put together our implementation plans in the coming year. Um, and throughout this process, you can propose those amendments or additional findings by motion. Now, moving to the comprehensive plan elements. Um, there are um four elements that had um like relatively minor amendments to remain consistent with um the updated growth targets and some of the changes throughout the rest of the plan. Um, so those are the land use, transportation, capital facilities and utilities element. Um, so land use was updated primarily just to remain consistent, again, with changes to our housing element and the economic development element and the parks and recreation, um, sorry, parks and open space element. Then transportation element was updated to make sure that our infrastructure will keep pace with our projected growth over that twenty years. That includes like looking at the level of service impacts that can be expected from um increased uh population as the city continues to grow. Um, then the capital facilities element looks at how our facilities will keep place with the projected growth. Again, there was some le- level of service analysis in there that needed to be conducted because we have uh, you know, growth targets uh for employment and housing um that can affect our facilities. And then utilities, it's the same. It's to make sure that our utilities infrastructure keeps pace with our projected growth. Now, there were three elements that received, there were two new elements drafted during this comp plan update um per the the scope of work adopted by the city council. And then there was also an updated, uh, a significant update to the housing element, as we've talked about a bit so far. So the economic development element is the first of the new elements that we'll look at here. Um, this, this was drafted over a pretty long process, as I mentioned, when we were looking at the timeline um that began with some public input and data collection. Um, and that that took place in the second half of twenty twenty-two. Um, and that culminated in a workshop, an online survey and that economic analysis report. And then from there, we began drafting um the um economic development element with the Economic Development Work Group. Um, and that was um, that process went from October to June um of twenty twenty-three, and then that kicked off the Planning Commission review, um where you refined that um workgroup draft element. Um, so that's the other, so that's the first of those new elements. That's Exhibit Seven of PCB twenty-four thirteen. The other new element of the comprehensive plan or the other proposed new element is the Parks and Open Space Element, which is Exhibit Eight of PCB twenty-four thirteen. This is a new element that um primarily is is there to adopt um the part, the pros plan um by reference, make sure that that's um adopted as part of our comprehensive plan. And then it also provides some policy direction for the adoption of some new zones. Um, the first phase of that would be during this comp plan update and will be the open space zone um which the Planning Commission was looking at at the end of April and into early, or I guess it was just early May that the Planning Commission was looking at that. Um, the other new zone that's uh, that has some policy direction in the Parks and Open Space Element is the the Parks Zone, um but that is planned for to follow after the comprehensive plan update um and is not expected to be adopted with the comprehensive plan update. It's just, there's some direction to undertake that work following the comp plan update here. So the housing element really was, um, we're we're proposing a repeal and replacement of the housing element. Um, so the the draft in Exhibit Three of the Planning Commission Bill um is proposed as a replacement of the existing element. And that was primarily because that statewide legislation um really, really altered the GMA requirements. Um, specifically House Bill twelve twenty and House Bill eleven-ten really made it so that um we needed a a new policy direction in that housing element. Um, specifically um under House Bill twelve twenty, for example, um we're required, the city is required to plan for um nearly all of its uh growth target, um its housing growth target to be um affordable to households with incomes below the AMI. Um, and this new housing element was really drafted specifically to address those requirements and uh do it consistent with uh the guidance from the Department of Commerce. Um, so there were some uh technical reports uh that fed into this process that really informed the housing element. Um, the drafting of the housing element. There was the Housing Needs Assessment, which was uh prepared in the second half of twenty twenty-two, presented to the City Council in September of twenty twenty-two. Um, the Land Capacity Analysis Supplement, which again was drafted based on the Commerce Guidance um at the second half of twenty twenty-three. And that was presented to council at their very first meeting of this year, twenty twenty-four, along with the racially disparate impacts evaluation, which is another uh report that was prepared based on the um, the Commerce Guidance that took a look at um or was there to evaluate um how housing policies may have had a racially disparate impact and then identify some potential amendments to address that. Um, the draft, as as was pointed out um earlier, the draft of the housing element was um prepared by uh the Housing Work Group, um which was a joint Planning Commission and City Council Subcommittee. Um, so it was a, it was uh uh council and the Planning Commission uh members uh kind of drove that process. Um, and um arrived at their recommended draft um in March of twenty-four. Um, and then the Planning Commission reviewed that Housing Work Group draft um and made some refinements um through March of this year. Um, so that's kind of how we got to the housing element. I I see a hand.
Yeah, Victor.
Yeah, so just a quick question on that. Just for clarification.
Just for clarification, so the housing work group draft that you, that you referred to in the previous slide that takes into account Department of Commerce recommendations, that is reflected in the housing work group draft from March twenty twenty four?
Yes, the commerce guidance was, the, the housing element draft reflects the commerce guidance. That was kind of our main source of, of guidance for drafting that housing element.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, we'll keep rolling here. So that's a very quick overview of the last two plus years of work with the commission here. So I wanted to, I provided some recommended motions in the Planning Commission Bill twenty four thirteen. And, and these are recommended primarily, they're, they're a roadmap to how we kind of get from A to B in this process. So the first two are addressing those policy gaps that were identified, the consistency topics. That's the first recommendation is, is amending those, like some of the policy language within the plan. As outlined in table one of Planning Commission Bill twenty four thirteen. The second motion is making findings. Again, those are directed primarily at the at the public input that we received during the open house and the online survey. So we can, we can address those findings. And through this process, again, if there's other amendments or to, or additional findings that you'd like to make, we can, we can address those with motions as well. And then once we've gotten to a point, and I, I think there was some confusion, I, I don't think we're going to arrive there tonight. But eventually we want to arrive at this third motion, which is moving forward the recommendation of the overall comprehensive plan update to the city council. So once we've, once we've gone through the rest of the plan and you feel comfortable making a recommendation, that's where that, that third motion would come in. And I can, I can bring these back up if you'd like. Oh, sorry, there's one more, just kind of looking ahead. The next two meetings we expect will continue deliberations. The, the, at the next meeting on June fifth, we expect the, the focus will be on transportation, capital facilities and utilities elements. And we're asking for you to provide written comments by next Monday, June third, so that we can get those distributed to the council or the commission ahead of the meeting. And then on the twelfth, that's our target to conclude deliberations. And that's where we'll focus on land use, housing and economic development. And for that meeting, we're asking for comments by the tenth.
Victor.
So a process question for you, Chair and Vice Chair. Obviously, as Adam laid out, lot to cover between now and, and June twelfth. And I'm just wondering what your thoughts are for stopping points for each of these meetings that we have scheduled for tonight? Tomorrow night and, or I'm, I'm sorry, tonight, June fifth and then June twelfth.
Well, I haven't thought about stopping points. I think the question tonight's meeting, I believe the two motions that we want to get through should not be too difficult. So I would expect those to go relatively quickly. I think the question for the June meetings is whether there will be any significant further amendments to those elements. And given all the effort that's gone into them to date, I would expect there wouldn't be significant amendments. So I don't, I don't really envision a problem. But maybe I'm missing something. Angie.
Thanks, Chair Murphy. Well, I, I think I'm following up on Victor's question and I want to aim a couple of questions at Adam to help me understand process and also resolve that point you just made about you don't expect amendments. Adam. One of the things I think I'm noticing both in public comments and in process is that we've received a lot of public comments over the last couple of years during this process. I feel like actually there's a fair number of comments that were received that people probably don't know exactly how their comments were treated. And I'm curious what the city's plan is for, do you intend to specifically and explicitly respond to comments? So for example, Patty Smith submits comments on the housing element. Do you plan to respond to Patty Smith very explicitly with explanations about how you did or did not incorporate her comments or answer her questions? That's my first question to you. Like, what is the city's plan to explicitly address comments we've already received up till now and comments we've received during like the last twenty four hours?
So we don't typically respond directly to public comments. That's, I think if there's, if you'd like, we can keep track of changes made to the draft that are made in response to those public comments. But I, unless there was a need for a clarification, we don't, we don't typically respond to those comments.
Okay. And while if I sat down clearly in your seat, I would probably recognize the amount of substantive effort it would take to do that. One of the things I'm also recognizing is that when people give us comments, I don't think they know or understand what we do with them. Like, I'm not even sure they know if you came back and you made a change, you being the city, or if the city came back and made a change and the planning commission voted on it. I, I'm not sure that people would know how to articulate or digest what happened with their information. And so what I'm interpreting in public comment is that there seems to be a a tenor of, we keep telling you things and you're not doing anything with it, which I don't, in some instances, agree with because I feel like we did do stuff with it, but they don't see it or they don't recognize or we're not getting back to them. And so I'm, I, I'm speaking to that because I noticed that and I want as a, as a planning commissioner, I want to make sure people understand that I'm actually reading what they're sending and I'm thinking about it and I'm looking at it. As a participant with you as a city partner, I, you know, like I'm trying to connect the dots here. And also just from a process perspective, moving forward, we're gonna get comments now. And people are gonna want changes made or amendments. You know, some folks have already pointed to changes fellow commissioners have submitted and, and feeling like that's either unfair or out of process. I, I actually do have some question about that. I'm like, I, I do have some question. Like if everyone submits a, I think you should change it to be this. How are we going to let them know we will or won't do it? And what is our discernment around that? I, I think that's actually important for us to make sure we're clear about regarding process. And we've been doing this for two years and we've been doing it piece by piece. So we've made a lot of changes already. But per city process, this was also, this timeframe was the timeframe where we are giving the public an opportunity to give us more feedback. It was another touch and we are going to make changes. That said, I want to understand what my role is as a commissioner. If we're getting feedback right now, is it my job as a commissioner to propose an amendment to make changes based on public feedback? Or will you as the city be coming back next week and saying, hey, we reviewed the forty seven comments we received? And we're going to recommend this change because the policy review and gap closure analysis doesn't address that. That addresses the gap closure analysis. The findings kind of start to address it, but not really. Or if it is supposed to address it, I think we need to make more explicit how. Does that make sense?
So I will be, in advance of the next meeting, will, I'll be providing you with a matrix of the comments that we've received. In terms of responding to those comments, again, it's not necessarily, staff doesn't necessarily make recommendations based on the public comments unless we're, unless we're asked, unless you could request that staff develop a recommendation or recommended language based on a comment or but if you, if you're reading those public comments and would like to move forward with one of those comments, making one of those amendments, you, you can, you could make that motion as a planning commissioner.
Okay. I, I guess I just noticed though that and this might be a relationship thing. Like this, this might be a relationship thing between city and commission and my neighbors, which is if people don't, if people feel like they keep giving the same comments over and over and nothing is happening, it's because the loop isn't getting closed. And I, you know, like, I just want to, I'm not saying we have to attend to everything. Sometimes we just have to say we, we're not going to do your comment because it doesn't meet state law or a political, there's a political piece that doesn't, or it actually doesn't, doesn't fit here. But I do want to acknowledge that, you know, I hear a lot of, I keep telling you something and I'm not getting feedback. And even I'm trying to figure out what to do with some of it. Like, oh, they keep giving us some feedback. Am I as a commissioner supposed to make a motion or speak to it or not? So I think that's one thing I just, I, I think it's a, it's actually process piece for me in understanding what are we doing tonight and what are we doing next week? And do I need to make sure I do all of the comment review to make motions? Or are you going to do it? Or we, do we need to have a discussion about that? So thank you. I think what I heard you say is you're going to make some recommendations as they make sense. You're not going to do it for all of them. You'll give us a matrix. And we're welcome to submit motions as we as commissioners see fit.
Yes, and I, I think that one of the things that we can do is we can keep track of those, those comments if they do lead to an amendment. We can note that in the matrix, that, that's a comment tracking thing we do for, or we can do for this process.
Thank you.
Kate.
Thank you for organizing me, Chair. I, I was expecting to see a matrix of comments and I think given that the SEPA decision here by the city as lead agency was a DNS, which is shorthand for determination of nonsignificance. That's not required as it is with an EIS. But I think what I heard from Commissioner Betazza, and I'm inclined to agree with, is that before taking any action on proposed recommended motion number three, that commissioners would need a table of comments and if and how they've been responded to. From my read of many of the comments, they are in conflict with the mandate from the House bills regarding the housing element. I think it's going to be a real challenge for us as commissioners or staff to respond to several of those comments without having some kind of conflict with state law. And, and we used primarily, but I understood the staff to use was the recommendations from the State Department of Commerce, which we are now required to monitor and have accountability for. So so I think that Commissioner Betazo is on the nose. I would, I would like, I don't know how, if this, like, we are directive or if the chair asked for it or what, but a table of comments would be great. Also, I am ready to move on recommended action one and two. And I would actually like to make a motion to close the policy gaps and resolve the internal consistency topics as recommended by staff in PCB twenty four thirteen, table one as presented. Reason being, they make sense, they're simple. And, and I'm ready to move forward on that one.
I will second that.
Okay. Before we do that, Victor has his hand up and I want to get his comment in before we address that motion.
Thank you. So I was just going to say plus one to Commissioner Betazo's comments. There was a fair amount of hand wringing earlier in this meeting about lack of public participation. And there seems to be a disconnect with the people who are trying to participate, who may not feel that they're being heard. While Commissioner Betaza was speaking, I brought up the comments of Mr. Also Spence Perez Jr., who very clearly spent a lot of time dissecting the comprehensive plan and providing very specific comments to it. I would hate for those comments to just go in a black hole and, and be ignored. I think it's important. Certainly if I, if I was commenting and I felt like my comments were going in a black hole, eventually I would, I would stop commenting. So but further, further to that, we've heard a, a number of comments or seen a number of written comments, both today and previously, about the planning commission exceeding its original scope. And so what might be helpful is also, Adam, if we could provide what the original scope was. I actually went back earlier today and tried to find it and we don't have, we don't have agendas and comments or video going back to March twenty twenty two, which is when when this process actually started. And so it would actually be helpful to see what the commission, commission was originally charged with. And then to use that as a lens for some of these changes that have been made to see if these changes meet that, meet that criteria or not.
Yeah, there has been, especially in the area of housing, there has been a pretty radical change in scope based on the state law requirements. And that's really where most of the, what I'll say, negative comments circle around. So I'm not sure if looking at the original scope of work is, is very determinative of whether we're on track, especially in the housing area.
Well, if I recall correctly, it was only what is required by state law. I think, and I'm paraphrasing going back more than two years. And so certainly I think we should be able to capture what was in housing bill. You named the housing bill. I can't, I can't remember the number. And if that's, if that's a requirement by state law, well, then certainly that's, that's something that we would need to change as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I'll, I'll provide the scope of work or at least links to it. The housing piece of that, there was an addendum to the scope of work that was adopted by the city council last summer that specifically addresses housing and is where a lot of the housing element components that we put together in this last year came from. And so, well, I'll provide all of that for the next meeting.
So that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Kate.
I believe Carol, or Commissioner Boatsman had a hand up.
No, it's done.
It went away. I was going to ask Adam in response to Victor's comment, when we were on the housing work group, you had shared draft document and some tables and whatnot that had very efficiently crosswalked every single item that was proposed to be added to the housing element with the requirement in state law and as well as referencing Department of Commerce guidance on those topics. Was that made available on the public website? Because if not, I think that's a very straightforward way. It was very easy for me and the reason I made very few comments on the staff draft of the housing element was because they were so clearly crosswalked to the state law in that document you gave us. Was that shared online already?
It was. So there was a planning commission bill in March that had that. It was the, the first bill that brought forward the housing work group draft. And it, it had that crosswalk between the policies and, and the requirements. And it was not just state requirements, it was multi-county planning policies and CPPs too, so.
T S R C. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Maybe it would be helpful to send that link to those materials to the commission so we can revisit those and revisit those in the light of the comments that we've received. Thank you.
Victor and Angie, I think, I, I share your concern about the lack of Uh, Victor and, uh, and Angie, I think, I, I share your concern about the lack of. Sort of official response to comments. And the concern about people making comments and having them go into a black hole. Uh, so I do think that having something that. Um, pulls that together to have in the record would be very good. Um, and if, if there are things in there that. Lead themselves to an amendment, um, that could be brought forward by any of the commissioners or staff. Um, I am a bit concerned about the notion of going back and trying to. Um, revisit the entire housing. Uh, elements to see if, if we're strictly complying. Um, in, in someone's opinion with the state law, um. That, that ground's been covered and, and if there's some glaring error or problem there, I think that should be brought, brought out. But I, my read, albeit a quick read of many of the comments have just come in over the last day or two. Um, is that they are consistently. Simply objections to what's being required of us by the state. Um, and people don't like it, or some people don't like it. And, and so, and they have a right to their opinion, um, but it's not going to result in a change. Because we have to comply with the state law, state legal requirements. Uh, Victor.
So just, just to clarify. I'm not, I'm certainly not requesting a revisit of decisions that have been previously made by the commission. That's two years worth of work and that's just, um, that's a bridge too far. Um.
Yeah.
But, uh, with that said, a number of people have raised the issue that. Um, we've gone beyond what was. Chartered, which would have been March twenty-two, and then as you mentioned, there was, um. An additional charter around the housing bill that happened. And so it would, it would be useful, I think, to simply kind of provide the original charter as well as the amended charter. Or charters. And then, uh, use that as a potential lens to, um. To allow the public to evaluate the changes that have been made.
Yeah, I agree with that. Angie.
Thank you, um. Plus one about what Victor is saying, I'm not recommending we go back and revisit. I think that the process the planning commission engaged in was both transparent and rigorous, at least. As far as I've been involved and I'm certain the process prior to my involvement. Um, I, I don't think it's important for us to argue with people who have opinions that are frustrated. I'm not trying to argue, but what I notice is a clear and distinct lack of the actual response to the engagement. And as a planning commissioner who is supposed to be supporting and representing. My neighbors, um, or at least trying to help support and bridge the gap between the city and the voice. Um, I think it's important for us to be able to at least provide some context or some reasoning or some acknowledgement to what I see is some. High frustration and consistent feedback without actually letting people know. I don't even know if the word is why, but at least just responding with some information and some acknowledgement. And what I will say is, like, I'm happy to support moving forward on policy gap closure, but I actually think. Especially if it's gonna fall on planning commission's shoulders to make a recommendation to the city. That I would like to reserve the opportunity to make some findings. And allow comments in our findings to potentially speak to that. If the city's not gonna be able to do a full crosswalk. In comments that perhaps in our findings, we're gonna need to be able to come up with some language. Or some acknowledgement or some reference to, we heard you. We recognize your frustration and here's where we made the change, cause there are places we probably did make a change, we just didn't tell them. And then there's places where we're like, ah, sorry, we actually have to comply with the gross manag- growth management act. And I hear that it's unbelievably frustrating. Let's get coffee and I'll listen to you be really frustrated about it, or whatever that might have to be. I, I'm not saying we put that in the matrix, but I am saying I think it's an important. Loop we have to close. And as planning commissioners, if the city's not gonna do it, I actually think we need to in our findings.
Okay, so now we have a motion that's been seconded to approve their proposed. Policy gap amendments. Is there any discussion of that? Motion, Carolyn.
Yeah, I'm, I'm generally in favor of the motion. I mean, I've read through all of the, uh, um. Uh, proposals from staff to close the policy gaps and compared that to what. Kim Lee Horn recommended and, and also the, um, consistency. Issues within the, the comp plan, and I, I think the proposal is, is quite good. Um, I would like to recommend one amendment, however. So can we take, can you take an amendment right now to the? Um, staff's proposal to close the policy gaps.
Is it a friendly amendment?
Well, it's, it's just an amendment to the language in the. Um, policy gap. For number four.
Process wise, I think you would just need to make a motion to amend the motion that's on the table.
Okay, well, I'm, I moved to amend the emotion, the motion. By, uh, inserting the word light after the word noise. In the resolution for policy gap number four.
Second.
Because it's my amendment, do. Or because it's. The motion I put on the table, do I say that's. Fine with me that we change the motion in that way, cause it's fine with me.
Okay, well, if it's fine with you, then I, I say we go ahead. Angie.
Um, I just want clarity of what we're amending, cause I, am I looking at table one reference for? Cause that, that doesn't line up to me, or does it?
Adam, would you be able to put it up on the screen, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting it here.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Uh, okay. Okay, so here's policy gap four. Um.
Can't really see the whole thing there. Uh, mm. Uh, can't see that, okay, that's good, yeah, that's, I can see it now.
Okay, and you're saying after air, you want light?
After the word noise, the word light.
Oh, okay. Just highlighted on the screen here, and now I'll zoom in so that you can see it, maybe.
Thank you, Adam.
The reason I am proposing it, if I may, Chair, shall I explain?
Continue, yes.
Okay, um, the consultant Kim Lee Horn had recommended in, um. Their summary of Vision twenty fifty multi-county planning policies in environment number seven. That, um, that. We have policies that reduce and mitigate noise and light pollution caused by transportation, industries, public facilities and other sources. Now. The staff has already included one change. In fact, if you look just up to the next box, you will see the word light. Added to the transportation element policy three point one, which is great. But that's only to do with light coming from transportation sources. So I wanted to add the word light. To, um, this policy that it has to do with light coming from many other sources. Please take note that this policy is directed toward. Um. People in areas that have been disproportionately affected. So that is why I have proposed another amendment to the actual comp plan, which we can take up later. But these two changes right here are good. One, you know, pertains to transportation noise. The other one pertains to disproportionately affected people in areas, which, those are both good. Not quite enough to deal with. These things should be also addressed for everybody in all neighborhoods. And that's why I have proposed another amendment, but, okay, so that's my reason for the amendment right here.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, Victor.
Um, how do we determine, um, areas that have been disproportionately affected?
My understanding is that. The studies have shown that these sources of pollution are greater in places where you have people living that. Have lower incomes, so it's gonna be in your multifamily areas, your, your housing that's mixed up with commercial property. Um, so those are the areas that typically are, are disproportionately affected.
I, I think, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that. We had a map in front of us a few months ago about economic distribution. I don't remember a low in, seeing a low income area on Mercer Island. I'm doing that from memory. I seem to remember, the entire map was green. So how do we determine low income?
Well, this doesn't say low income, it just says.
You just said, I, I'm going off of what you just said.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm trying to refer to. Air. That, you asked where the, the, the people would be more disproportionately affected or the areas, and they're the areas where. We have multifamily housing. Um. In, mixed with commercial pro- commercial development, those are the, those are the areas. So that's what this policy is directed to.
Further discussion. Deb, would you please call the roll?
So Chair, I think the cleanest way to do this is to vote on the amendment, which is specific to the policy gap number four.
Yes, that's what I assumed you were going to do.
Okay, there was some discussion around that, so we'll stick with that.
Yes, correct.
So the amendment is, uh, to amend policy gap four to read. Reduce impact to people in areas that have been disproportionately affected by noise, adding in the word light. Air pollution or other environmental impacts. Okay. Commissioner Gels.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regu.
Hi.
Commissioner Bataso.
Hi.
Commissioner Rashis.
Name.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Hi.
Commissioner Kues.
Hi.
And Chair Murphy.
Hi. Okay.
Passes six one.
So now we move on to the original motion to approve the.
To close the policy gaps and resolve the inner, internal consistency topics as recommended by staff and PCB twenty-four thirteen, table one is presented.
Yes. Um. Victor.
Are we having a discussion?
Uh, well, if, if there's more discussion needed, uh, you're, you're, you're correct. Yeah, I think we, we did not have discussion of the main motion yet, so you're right, so go ahead.
Um, so on item number one. Uh, a question for Adam, what does it mean to prioritize services?
Uh, so it would be preserve, prioritize services and access to opportunities, so we wanna make sure that those, uh, communities of color. Um, and people with low incomes are, um, getting the service and access.
But that's just repeating what's said here, what does that mean?
Right. Um, well, so what that would mean is that as we're implementing the elements, um, we're considering actions that might affect services. That would go to those communities that they would, that we would make sure that those communities have access as we make those decisions.
Can you give me an example of a service that would be prioritized?
Um, sure, as we were looking at maybe, um, a decision that would affect wireless service, um, and. Like wireless internet service, um, we would wanna make sure that we were maintaining that access and, um. Prioritizing keeping that service, uh, going. Um, or that our actions weren't going to jeopardize that.
Yeah. Uh, where do we have a definition of people of color in the comp plan?
Uh, we do not define the term.
So who's responsible for defining the term people of color?
Uh, typically when the comp plan or the code does not establish a definition, you would use the, um, average def- like the. The dictionary definition of the, um, of the term.
Got it.
Any further discussion or questions on the motion, Adam?
Um, I just, you know, I, I. Expanding on that reference number one, I think one of our public comments was this is not a, you know. A race issue, but it's really a socioeconomic issue, so I, I. I think there's enough momentum for this to just be passed, but I do wanna state that I think we ought to add some language to articulate that. It's preferable to prioritize, prioritize services to, based on socioeconomic status, not. You know, not skin color, those are some of the comments we had. Think some of those comments, you know, I'm, their words, not mine, um, use the words racist and patronizing. Um, and then, you know, in addition on reference number seven and ten, I just wanted to communicate my. Opinion that, you know, these words inequities and underserved areas are just, they're, they're, they're quite vague, like. You know, ten, you know, okay, we're talking about telecom services, we see an underserved area, is that a place that does not have line of sight? Like, I know, you know, if we don't have a line of sight, there, there's a few hills on Mercer Island and. Uh, wh- what do we mean underserved? Um, so I just wanted to, as I said, I'm not gonna belabor the point or try to break them out. But I think seven and ten are vague, and I wanted to articulate that we have received some public comment on, on number one.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay. Let's call the roll.
Vice Chair Regu.
Nay.
Commissioner Bataso.
Aye.
Commissioner Kues.
Aye.
Commissioner Rashis.
Name.
Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
And Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Main motion passes five two.
Yeah. So now the question is, um. Moving on to the findings, um. Commissioner Bataso spoke earlier to the notion of. Um, reserving the ability to supplement those findings before the end of this process. Uh, to address. Comments and any changes made by amendment. Um. The way this is. Worded, at least the staff proposal is worded is, is, is we're recommended approving the findings. Um. The question might be, should we. Provisionally approve these findings subject to changes, uh, in lieu of. A definitive approval of these findings as presented. Uh, Carolyn.
Well, I was just going to move that we adopt the findings subject to further amendments to said findings. Prior to the recommendation before, to the council.
Do I have a second for that?
Let's discuss it second.
Okay. Uh, Victor.
Excuse me, Chair, just a moment if I may. I'm gonna slow you down for a second, make sure I capture that last, uh, portion of Commissioner Boatsman's motion, which is subject to, excuse me.
Subject to amendments prior to the final recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
Uh, Victor.
We put up, uh, the findings that we're approving here. I'm, I'm having a hard time finding the, the exact link in the agenda packet. I've got a bunch of tabs open.
Yeah, I'll get it here. One second. And, yeah, it won't quite fit. There they are.
And what item is that in the agenda packet?
This is exhibit one of PCB twenty-four thirteen.
Okay, so just further down, I see. I got it. Okay.
Yeah, the findings are about twenty pages and then the rest there of that exhibit are attachments, the findings that are
Got it.
things from the record.
Yeah, okay. I've got it now. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Batazzo.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. Um, it's eight, it's seventy-nine pages of findings, twenty of which are content, eighteen of which are statutory, uh, recounts of what we did and when we did it and why we did it and whatnot with a couple of pages of bullets of here are some findings, here are some rough summary findings based on feedback from the community. In my mind, just based on reviewing this, I think this is a great first draft, and so I want to acknowledge the city for having done it. I, I think we have a great start here, and I don't really have any basic arguments other than it needs more. Like, I think based on my review of public comment um, and just listening to thematically the comments that keep coming up and what seemed to me to be a general lack, whether it's on the part of council, the mayor, the commissions, or the city to actually respond to some of the stuff that comes up uh, regularly. I think it would be important for us to add into these findings, just a little bit more content, recognizing what we hear and recognizing where we are or are not taking action. So I, I'm in opposition of moving the findings forward, but I am acknowledging that this is a great initial first draft, and it's something that I would like to build upon, um, and hopefully to some degree close the loop on by June fifth, de- depending on how much we think we have to review and how much the city is going to be proposing, uh, amendments to all of these elements. Um, you know, it seems like something we'll be able to close quickly. Uh, but it, it's not something I'm gonna vote for tonight.
Commissioner Kues.
Findings, I understood that we were voting on were the seven or eight items uh, enumerated by staff in the first document in our agenda packet. So if it's something that's not that, I, I would like clarification because my understanding was this is a very, very simple vote and um, we could add a finding that says words with something pretty quickly that says track public comment and responses to public comment.
So maybe I can
As an additional finding.
Yeah.
Or are there actually eighty pages of finding that I'm not?
Um, so as what, sorry, what's, what's shown on the screen here is, i- is those eight findings from table two. Um, these are just in the document with the staff findings as well. And certainly throughout, throughout the process, the planning commission can continue to add to this list um, before finalizing their recommendation. Um, as I understood the motion, I, what it was to move forward with these seven, um, these seven items here, which are from table two of the, this is just an easier way to look at it in one go.
Okay, so we're, the vote is, do we approve these seven items on these two pages? And we can add more if we need to in the future. That's what we're voting on?
As, as I understand it.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Regu.
Um, I, I guess, yeah, I wanted to, I was, I, I think, yeah, Adam's clarified the first question is, yeah, we're voting on F one through F seven. Um, I would like to propose a friendly amendment to break out F two and F five for further discussion. I'm happy to green light the remaining five.
So to help with that, uh, F two would be B.
Yeah, Bravo and Echo. Yes, sorry. I'm, I'm looking at the table too.
I know, I'm sorry.
So is that a motion, Adam?
Uh, sure. Yes, that, that is a motion to break out, yeah, F two or B slash F two and E Echo slash F five for a separate discussion.
Is there a second for that?
I will second it for discussion.
Yay. Chris.
Yeah, you know, I, I think Adam sent around, I also would like to, if we're going to discuss these, um, breakout C sometimes known as F three for a little discussion too.
Second.
I'm going to have to slow all of you down because I'm sorry, I can't see the screen and
Sorry. So I would, I would make a motion that we also, uh, discuss um, F three uh, among the findings.
Second.
Kate.
I'm, I'm curious, the, the findings that are being called out are, seem to all be related to the housing element. Um, and I'm curious, the reason I did not have a problem with them is because they are consistent with the housing element um, as drafted and approved by the mayor to council members, et cetera. Um, so I'm curious about process here, uh, and, and order of operations, because if we're if there's a decision made to modify these, it needs to be done in the context of the housing element review. So perhaps that needs to be done first. Um, and, and we need to figure out if there are going to be any amendments to the housing element first uh, before addressing these findings. Because if we remove these findings or modify them in some way, they will then become inconsistent with the mayor and council and to planning commissioners' recommendations for the housing element.
Carolyn.
Well, I was just gonna ask, what is meant by taking them out for further discussion? Does that mean the discussion tonight? Or in regard, because we're considering a, a, a motion to adopt this thing as is. So when you, when you say to pull it out for further discussion, I just wonder if that means go ahead and adopt everything but those three things, or if we're gonna discuss it tonight. So just what does that mean?
Uh, Victor.
I'm, I'm trying to understand the context in which this will be used. I, I realize that it's going to be presented as a part of the comprehensive plan. Is it, is it like a prelude to the comprehensive plan that's going to be presented to, uh, as, as a part of it? Because I, I'm i- in reading, in reading, um, the packet, it said the findings will be presented and um, basically, I, I'm trying to, trying to find the exact quote, but it'd be, I, I thought it was going to be in response to public comment. We just got public comment tonight. So I'm unclear as to how we can provide findings, having just heard public comment. And, and maybe if I'm understanding, uh, Commissioner Batazzo's comment, maybe that was her comment as well. I don't know, I'm just I'm a little confused about context and process here.
Sure, so I can, uh, I, I heard two questions in there. First, the findings um, the, the findings will be presented with your recommendation to the city council. Um, findings are usually an exhibit to a, um, an ordinance and they provide that additional information or context to the legislation. Um, it primarily, these will guide our preparation of implementation, um, plans for um, implementing the comprehensive plan. So they give us some direction about how to do that. Um, so that's the answer to the, to answer your second question, you know, these are um, going to be helpful as we put together our implementation plans to know kind of where you're coming from as you recommend this draft of the comp plan. I hope that clears that up. And, oh, and yes, throughout this process, the, you can add mo- you can add findings to this document, um, as you would like to, in response to public comments. So if, if comment, if, if a comment says X and you want to do, you want to respond to it, but don't necessarily want to put in a policy, you can provide that additional context here. Um, and pretty much until you complete your recommendation, um, the findings will be more or less open. These are, this is really your document, your, your chance to say to give the council that additional context that you want.
So except that, uh, if I'm understanding your answer, your second answer there correctly, accepting the fi- the, the findings tonight is not final. It's a, we're accepting a working document. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, and then you could amend it throughout the process by motion.
Okay, that, that helps. Thank you.
Adam.
Um, yeah, I guess the intent of my friendly amendment was to um, propose, you know, adopting Alpha, Delta, Foxtrot, and Golf as a group and then breaking out Bravo and Echo plus Charlie, um, per Commissioner Goals' recommend recommendation for separate discussion. Um, as regards any inconsistencies with the housing element, um, you know, looking at the table, I mean, this is this is kind of the, exactly, I think, what was asked for earlier in the meeting um, for the, the public comments that were received through the, that online survey. So you know, ob- obviously, we've received a lot of public comments through email where we haven't gotten, you know, we haven't processed that, but I, I see this as processing that, that chunk of the, what, eighty eighty-seven, uh, pieces of public comment that came through the, um, that came through the online survey. So that, yeah, just, I guess, yeah, clarifying my intent and then I think the way I'm reading the table is that this is staff's boiled down version of those eighty-seven survey responses.
Uh, Carolyn.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that my understanding is, as, as, uh, Adam was just saying, that this was in response to the two surveys that were done. And while you may have a policy, you know, that says something very specific or, or in some cases, general, uh, when you go to write the regulations, you have the opportunity to, you know, take prioritize certain things or, or go about it in a certain way. And it seems to me that the survey guided the staff in order to as, um, Adam, as Z was saying, uh, this will help in determining how to write the regulations based on what people said in those surveys.
Uh, Kate.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Adam, it might be good for you to go over all the sources of information that led to this. I, it sounds like we're really not ready to vote on this. I, I wouldn't vote on it piecemeal-y. It sounds like the planning commission is not like, uh, fully, fully immersed in what this actually is and need some time to, more time to consider it. Um, because my understanding is that these findings come not just from public comment, but also from comments made either in the housing work group or in prior planning commission meetings where commissioners or council members made a comment, um, such as the parking issue and were told by staff, that's not a policy, that, that's not a comp plan policy, that's an implementation strategy. And so, um, many of the items reflected here, for example, um, parking on neighborhood streets. I live on eighty-six, it's a nightmare. You know, people are parking all over the place. You've got kids riding bikes in the middle of the road. Um, that's something that I discussed, uh, in the housing work group meetings and, um, and I know that was a concern of, of a lot of others. So I think the source for these is, is pretty wide. I agree that we haven't addressed all of the public comment. Um, and my understanding is that these comments here mainly come from us and, uh, the council members who participated in, um, the housing work group and, and economic element. So, um, yeah, it's clear we're not ready to vote on this, at least in my opinion, um, from hearing discussion. And it's clear that, um, most folks uh, are not clear where these findings came from.
I think that was a question for me.
Just to summarize my rambling thought here, because I was a little bit confused when I was hearing my fellow commissioners talk. Um, this, the, because I was like, I recognize several things that council members or staff or planning commissioners had said in these comments. So if you could clarify, where did these findings come from? Um, and, uh, have you fully incorporated the eighty-four public comments in them? Because my understanding is these comments came from us, us as in city, uh, council and commissioners, and that, um, um, future amendments would be based on that public feedback that we've just had a chance to look at.
Yeah, so, um, the the majority of these findings were drafted based on the results of the survey. Um, now, the, the survey questions and some of the things that we were getting at were based on discussions that we've had in the housing work group and, and elsewhere. I mean, uh, obviously, we wanted to get public input on what, what we've been hearing kind of from the c- council, the work group, the commission. We wanted to get a little bit more input on that. Um, so that was the, where that kind of came from. Um, so the, the findings here are drafted based on primarily on that, so the survey results. And the second part of that question, yes, a- as we go through and respond to, I, I, I'll be providing a, a matrix of the public com- the written comments we've received. As you go through and respond to those, we can certainly make findings in response to those as well. Um, you know, a- as we go through that.
Adam, what I'm hearing from quite a few people here is that trying to piecemeal that by starting off and maybe approving some and pulling some uh, is just not a real work is just not a real workable process, and that we would be better served to deal with the findings once we get through the actual substantive elements, and have all the comments, and have had the opportunity to see your matrix, and to thoughtfully consider any additional amendments that might be appropriate, or findings that might be appropriate based on that. Uh, Angie.
Thanks, Chair Murphy. Um, I, I think I do want to just add to what you just said about recalling what you've heard from fellow commissioners. Um, we have a set of findings in front of us from staff. It's titled Staff Recommended Findings. Um, I heard Commissioner Cues, maybe others, just try and clarify where they came from. I think it's multiple sources. Um, I, I do want to make sure that we spend time tonight, if there's debate, which I've heard a couple of commi- commissioners pull up and say, I want to talk about this one, this one, and this one, especially given that we're going to be down a couple of commissioners after tonight's meeting. You know, if there's something valuable for us to debate and talk about tonight regarding these findings, it'd be great to have that, and then close the loop and have those open, um, as we continue to add to them. Like, I want to make sure we talk about it, because I don't want to talk about all of it at once if we have some good stuff in front of us. Um, I'm just not ready to approve holistic findings under the document Adam has on the screen. It's an eighty-page document, comprehensive, put together a good start, but it doesn't include commission findings. It's staff findings. Let's debate staff findings, um, but I'm not approving the document. Um, so I want to make sure we actually debate what we need to debate tonight with the commissioners we have.
Can we take a bio break first?
Yes, we can. Okay, let's take ten.
Bless you, Kate.
Uh, Carolyn, you had a hand up from the last time. Do you still have your hand up, or is that an old hand?
That's a, that's an ongoing hand. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, about the, how we're spending our time for the rest of the meeting here. So we were told that if we had amendments for the comprehensive plan, to get them in by last night, it was by close of business yesterday. So I did send several in, so I had the, I thought we were going to be looking at those amendments this evening. Um, so, and I think Chris has one as well. So I just wondered, are, are we gonna get a chance to look at those? Because when I sent them in, I sent them with the idea in mind that I was going to be here to explain them, but if that's not the case, I, I would need to probably do something different with those amendments.
Um, yeah, I think, I'm a little bit confused about that, uh, Adam, and maybe you can clarify. My understanding was that amendments to the findings, um, was for tonight, but amendments to the elements were before the meetings on the fifth and the twelfth.
I thi- I think the issue is Commissioner Bozeman and Commissioner Gels won't be here for those meetings.
Right, I agree with, I understand that. And so the question is, do we want to consider their amendments? Um, and the other question I have, in light of Commissioner Batazzo's comments, or last comments, is, are we, do we want to discuss certain findings out of the list, the twenty-page list, or the F-one through F-seven findings? Um, you know, one's obviously a much longer discussion. Um, or probably is. So, so I think the question is, uh, we can look at Carolyn's amendments and Chris's amendments, and deal with those while they're here, and then decide the issue of what exactly we're going to discuss regarding the findings.
A- as a, as just a point of order, um, there were, there's already three motions on the, on the table. Um, regarding the findings, I think if, before we move to another thing, we can, I mean, we could table that discussion for later, but it, I think just figuring out what we're gonna do with those emotions is probably the right process, um, now.
Well, the motion that I recall being the amendment to the motion to approve the findings was, uh, to, was from, uh, Adam to withdraw certain findings, and then, uh, Chris added, uh, F-three to that, um, I believe. Um, and so we can address that motion, you know, whether we're going to approve those findings, subject to those deletions, or if we, if we want to approve those deletions, and then address the motion to approve the findings. But based on what I'm hearing, we are not going to approve the, there's not a consensus building to approve the findings. So I'm not sure whether it makes a whole lot of sense spending time deciding to withdraw three items from the findings.
I'm inclined to withdraw my motion, you know, to approve the findings, if that's the simplest way to get to things here.
Um, yeah, but I, I think, Adam, did you second that?
I think I seconded, yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so let's withdraw that. So then, then your motion really becomes moot. The amendment to that motion becomes moot.
Give two amendments to the emotion, the original motion. So if everyone's agreeing to withdraw their emotions, I'll just strike it from the record.
Any objections? Kate. Oh, you're muted.
Oh, I was saying, sorry, I didn't know. I had a different, um, process question, so I'm gonna, I think Carolyn's hand is up about. Deb, can you tell us, we have Adam and Carolyn's agreed to withdraw their motion. Who's the third motion that needs to be withdrawn?
Yeah, the main motion that was made by, uh, Commissioner Bozeman, seconded by Commissioner Vice Chair Reagan. And then you have two separate motions that amended that. One motion was made by Vice Chair Reagan, and seconded by Commissioner Bozeman. The second was made by Commissioner Gels, and seconded by Vice Chair Reagan. You have three motions on the floor presently.
So we need Gels to agree to withdraw a motion to complete this activity?
That's correct.
Right, which, which is fine with me, I guess. I, I mean, the only, I don't have a proposed amendment to the comp plan. My only proposed amendment for this meeting was for the finding, uh, F-three. And so, but if, you know, that's not something that's being discussed tonight, I mean, that's not that big a deal.
Well, it, it may be discussed tonight.
Yeah, if we get around to it, great, but I, I'm happy to withdraw my motion to amend, since I think your point, Mike, that it's moot is, uh, is, uh, probably the right point.
Um, not sure who is next, Carolyn?
Yeah, I, I did want to follow up on what amendments were due by five o'clock yesterday. Because I did specifically ask Adam Zach about that, because it sounded to me like our direction was that if we had any amendments to the comp plan, they were due by five o'clock, and I did specifically ask that in an email, and I thought, Adam, that you told me that's indeed what was due. Is there, is there some misunderstanding, or? Is there, is there some misunderstanding, or we're not meeting in the middle there?
No, um, I mean, that's, if, if there's a, this is a, the commission's process. So if there's, if you would like to propose an amendment or make a motion to make one of your amendments, um, you, you could do that now. That would be okay, yeah.
All right, I, I guess, but that doesn't really answer my question. I thought all of our, I thought you told me in the email that all of our amendments for the comp plan for all commissioners were due at five o'clock yesterday.
A- any amendment that you wanted to propose today, we were asking that you would get it in by five yesterday, so that we could get it to the commission ahead of the meeting.
Uh huh, and, and I asked you if that had to do with just the things that had to do like with the um, the policy gap analysis and the findings and all that, and you said, no, it was for the whole comp plan. So what, what was meant there, and what should the other commissioners know if we're not all on the same page?
Uh, I, I don't know that we are not on the same page. I think you, you submitted your comments, and we can, we can consider those at the meeting today. Um, there'll be two more meetings, yeah.
Because I only saw comp plan amendments from Mr. Gels and I. And so we're presuming that all the rest of the commissioners have no comp plan amendments that they're proposing.
No, Carolyn, he's saying there were three opportunities to give amendments, and he was saying that yours would be due today, because this is the last meeting.
No, that's not what it said in the email, but that's fine. I can, I can take it that way. I just want to make sure that it's clear. Okay.
I didn't submit my comments, because I wanted a little more time to review.
Yeah, okay, maybe that's what was meant. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Uh, Kate?
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about uh some of the topics we're about to lead into discussion. Um, they're based on uh differences in like whether you make decisions based on belief systems, or that or whatnot, or whether or not you believe that Department of Commerce was correct, or whether you agree with a state law or disagree with the state law, and particularly on the topic of institutional racism. And whether you think that's a thing or not a thing. Um, and I would like to request that city staff, that we table that discussion until the city can provide a facilitator for that discussion, perhaps somebody from Department of Commerce who has expertise in this matter. Um, in my experience with this commission, it's uh, it's a difficult and fraught topic, and we don't all have the same background. And I think it is, does harm to people of color to have these discussions um in a public forum without them being facilitated, and I also think that it would be good for our team, all of us together, to revisit the Department of Commerce's definitions and the materials around this topic, because that is where those words come from. They don't come from the Housing Work Group, they don't come from staff, they come from the Department of Commerce. So rather than having a debate about our personal values or the lenses through which we see the world um on the topic of racism, I, I would like it to be uh in order to avoid harm to people of color, I would like to request that we have a facilitated discussion of that topic. Is that possible?
Was that a question for me?
It's a question for uh whoever is in charge of the content of these meetings and facilitating these meetings.
Sure, so the, the planning commission can request that. I don't know, I honestly, I don't know what that would entail for us to provide that. But I don't know if we would be able to provide it, but you can, you can make that request by emotion, and it's not something that I have a, a ton of other information about, but if you make that.
Yeah, and I think that, I think you're identifying the problem right there. Is that staff doesn't even have the information or background to discuss this issue, or to understand what resources are available to discuss this issue. That was my experience when talking about this issue with staff, that many of us and most of the people on this call do not have the lived experience of institutional racism. So we don't have the personal experience of it, and we don't have the educational background in it, which makes it very, very difficult to have a conversation about it in a public forum without doing further harm. Um, and I, I'm very concerned about that. I'm very concerned about doing further harm to people by having a discussion without um any lived experience at the table.
I could comment on that. I think it may be possible to, it is possible to get a facilitator for such a discussion, if that's what the commission wishes to do. The concern I have is around the timing with two remaining meetings on this topic in two weeks' time. Probably be really difficult to get someone who's available in that timeframe.
And that is why racial topics are always given short shrift, because we don't plan for them in our communication processes, and we don't educate our staff or our commissioners or the public about these topics. So I'm, I'm really frustrated with the fact that this has come up again. We've debated this topic before, and people are not referring to the Department of Commerce materials. Um, instead, we're talking about belief systems. That's extremely frustrating to me as a commissioner. Um, and, and I wish that uh, I wish that staff could figure something out, or rely on a consultant that's on hand, or try to get someone from Department of Commerce to come to our next meeting to discuss this topic.
Uh, Carolyn?
Would it help if, and, and if staff could do this, when you hear this type of discussion going on, and you know that we're dealing with Department of Commerce language, multi-county planning policies, county-wide planning policies? If you could just reference, say, this comes from that place, so we don't really need to put our, you know, just tell us where it comes from. Um, maybe, maybe that would suffice, if staff felt comfortable doing that.
It's been done. It's been done in the written documents, and people are still debating it.
Well, it could be, it could be continued to be done throughout the course of two more meetings, I was thinking. Maybe that might work.
Well, we need to move forward tonight. I am not really interested in deferring things forever, um, especially if it's difficult for staff to corral someone to assist us. Um, Kate, are there specific staff recommended findings in the F1 through F7 group that you believe are fraught, that we should table for this evening? And are there similar ones in the 20-page list of findings that you believe are touch, touch that third rail, as it were, and that you think should be uh treated differently?
Um, I think we should probably figure out if there's anyone else on the commission that cares at all about this topic, because the, the two that I heard Commissioner Regab call out are on the topic of race. Um, and then the parking one, I thought to me is uh tangentially related. There's one topic in it that um, you know, but I, I, I seriously doubt the majority of the commission wants to go in this direction. Um, so I'll just probably end up making my comments for the record. So if we're gonna move forward um without facilitated discussion, or without other commissioners choosing to read the materials that were provided to them, I will just make those comments for the record.
Uh, Adam?
I'm gonna say a point of order here on a clarification. I was responding to public comments, not my belief system, and I want that to be very clear um for this meeting. My comments were.
Been raised in previous as a personal belief system, so it's a, it's a second time we've heard it.
Okay, point of order here, let's not, no personal attacks are appropriate. So I would appreciate both commission members standing down on that issue.
Thank you, Chair.
Angie?
Um, I've heard two things that are being actively discussed right now. Um, we have a findings conversation. Um, I think Commissioner Ques was pointing to a potential conversation around finding two, three, and five, if I'm remembering accurately and noted accurately that those are the three that commissioners have pointed out that they want to discuss. Uh, Commissioner Ques, if I'm tracking accurately, I think what you're raising is a yellow flag about making sure that whatever discussion comes from pulling those out and discussing it i- is within uh the scope of our conversation a- and within the scope of what we're being advised to consider as defined by state, county, and municipal law. And that, in those places where um it gets challenging for some, that we refrain from bringing in belief systems, but we're trying to keep that conversation around the findings within that context. Does that sound like an accurate, you can give me a thumbs up if that's accurate. Great, um, the second piece I'm hearing out there is that uh Commissioner Gels has proposed an adjustment to a finding. And that Commissioner Boatsman has proposed uh an amendment to the comp plan. Um, so there's findings and there's comp plan. And I would just would love some structure around, are we gonna complete and close findings? And are we capable and able to? And then are we gonna close Commissioner Boatsman's amendment before we move on for next week? Chair Murphy?
Uh, I would hope to deal with the proposed amendments from the two commissioners that are transitioning off this evening, and if we need to defer finding discussions, we could. But I'm seeing at least four findings that don't appear to implicate concerns about um racial issues that we could either discuss or simply approve if there's no objection. So I think we can make some progress here. So my point in trying to get the issue of the findings off was so we can move to the proposed amendments from Carolyn and Chris.
Can we reverse the order of the agenda? And so we can address Carolyn and Chris's comments tonight. Do we have that option?
Sure. I don't see why not. It's our, our process. Carolyn? Oh, you're muted.
That might be a good idea, because the other discussion could be very, very long and might not get completed even in this night, so.
Correct.
That would help. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so Carolyn, um, if there is no objection, let's move forward to discuss your proposed amendments. Um.
Okay. Alright, I, I'm of.
Chris?
Yeah, I can see, I, you know, my only amendment isn't comp plan, it's finding. And it's pretty simple. I just wonder if we should just knock that off and, you know. And maybe the thing to do is not even to decide it, just maybe I'll just make my point, and when you guys do findings later, I will have said what I said, so we don't have to do an amendment or anything. Maybe just give me a minute to comment on what I'm suggesting for finding three, and then we can move on to the comp plan amendments. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, that would be more expositious.
Great, so yeah, all I'm saying, you know, I think, as I understand, F3, it was responsive to the 87 respondents who put something in and seemed to be concerned about the impacts of middle housing on sort of the residential neighborhoods. And, you know, for me, the, I don't know of a nexus between mature trees and middle housing. I think the, the tree thread is really from the size of structures and not the nature of who's living in them. And so, you know, my inclination was to take that out, and then the other thing I, I was a little concerned about, about F3, was it, you know, seems, seems like it assumes that we're gonna need regulation. And what I proposed, the language I proposed was simply to, which, you know, was sent out, so people have it, it'll be around. It was just simply to try to mitigate through regulation any impacts of uh moderate density housing on traffic onsite, on street parking and pedestrian safety, especially in those areas close to transit. So, yeah, I guess that was my only point, you know, I don't think we need to do anything on it tonight, but uh when you get around to findings, I just wanted to make that point. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carolyn?
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to amend Transportation Element Goal 12. Um, maybe it'd be a good idea to get that up on the screen if you can, Adam.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll second to promote discussion.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Thank you.
So I, Carolyn, I just pulled all three of your
Oh, okay.
Recommended changes here.
Thanks. All right, uh, the first one here, Transportation Element Goal 12. Um, that is in the, let's see, it's the definition of the goal, right, okay. Or it actually states the goal. So I just thought um that we should probably also be referring to uh linking these things with transit. Yeah, just probably an oversight to not have it in there, so that was my, my motion there, the reason for it.
Okay. Let's address that one at a time. Um, is motion been made and seconded? Do we have discussion of that? Seeing none? Deputy Kirk clerk, can you uh call the roll, please?
Hey, Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Vice Chair Regan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ques?
Aye.
Mr. Batazo?
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Rashi?
Aye.
And Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Amendment passes unanimously. Okay, Carolyn, your second one.
Um, shall I wait for Adam to put it up on the screen? It might be a little bit more helpful.
Oh, good, yes.
Okay, so the second one is just, you know, um, well, first I'll make the motion. The motion is to add the words "meet its adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals" after the word "travel to", deleting some text. Uh, you know, actually, this is probably silly for me to just try to put it in words. What I'm moving is what's on the screen. Is that sufficient?
I can make that work in the minutes if it works.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Um, I'll second. Did anyone second yet?
Commissioner Gels, was that you?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, uh, Angie?
Well, can Commissioner Boatsman please explain why she's proposing this before I comment?
Sure. Okay, so um, the Climate Action Plan um was entirely developed and fabricated to meet previously adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals that the city has had for many years. developed and fabricated to meet previous, previously adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals that the city has had for many years. So, um, to say that the cap establishes strategies just to address climate change is kind of vague. And I think that we should be more clear um, here that we're actually, um, is designed to meet certain goals. And then, the reason I proposed deleting the next sentence is just, I just thought it just didn't say much, but um, that was, it was just a little bit uh, meaningless or duplicative. So that's the reason I proposed it.
Uh, Angie, is that an old hand or are you ready to?
No, I, no, it's now a current hand based on the comment. Um, I think this is a an interesting example of something I've pointed to before, you know, as someone who is currently making a living helping the general public work through a variety of instruments with municipalities on public process and comprehensive plans and making sure that cities or counties or people follow what they say they're gonna do in order to deliver on behalf of the people. Um, I also argue that, um, kind of the level of granular editorializing that we do doesn't really make document, these documents stronger or make someone like me more or less able to argue or defend, uh, future implementations. Um, it just feels, it feels like making editorial changes that don't make strong adjustments to a document. And I think I just get a little bit fussy about that. Um, I did wanna hear what she had to say, but I just don't hear something compelling that suggests that we need to change it, that would strengthen it or ensure that the city is making better choices in the future with the change.
Adam.
Um, I mean, I'm indifferent to that meet its adopted part. I'll, I'll trust Commissioner Boatsman's more expert knowledge of that. But I think it does add some info here. I'm looking at the public review draft and it's got a yellow highlight saying a note, note, a list of amendments made in response to the Climate Action Plan will be inserted here. And this proposal inserts that list, goes twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. So I think this resolves like a ye- a yellow highlight in the, in the publicly presented draft. So I'm, I'm all for it.
Uh, Carolyn.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, maybe just a li- a little more detail of the, the importance of this is that the Climate Action Plan, you know, as we go through the years and conditions change, um, you know, those goals of two, two times, the City Council has passed resolutions adopting greenhouse gas reduction goals. Um, they were most recently amended, probably about maybe five years ago or something like that. So it, it, it really is the bellwether as to what our climate plan does. And so I, I think it's kind of inter- important to note, and as things change over the years, this policy should really say the cap is supposed to meet the goals. Other things may change, but the goals remain. So I, I think it would be useful.
Any other comments? Angie? Oh, no, okay. Um, I tend to um, agree with Angie's overall approach that wordsmithing for wordsmithing's sake is not always worthwhile. But I think in this case, um, the change is really substantive and ties ties the issue to concrete um, goals. And so I think it's, it's worth making the change. Seeing no further hands, uh, Deb, do you want to uh, call the roll on this one?
Hey. Chair Murphy, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
Commissioner Rashiis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Regan.
Aye.
Motion passes five-two.
Okay, number three.
Okay, my last amendment, um, is to Housing Element Policy One Point Four. Um, as is stated on the screen, um, adding the more specific language about noise and light pollution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Carolyn, you want to speak to this or do we think it's been covered enough?
I would like to add, um, a little something more about it. Um, again, the, the Kim, Kim Lee Horn a- analysis uh, indicated they recommended that our policies be improved to address these concerns for everybody. But so far, our policies via the um, policy gap analysis, which we looked at earlier. So far, our policies are only amended for transportation noise or for racially disparate impacts. It so far doesn't have it for everybody. So I just felt that, um, we should be more specific here and include it for all neighborhoods.
Adam.
A quick question, context wise, I'm hoping that Commissioner Boatsman could provide some more information on this. Wasn't the light ordinance, didn't that make it in front of the City Council in the recent past and it kind of died? Could you provide a little more
Yeah.
Info about that just to help guide my, like, I'm, I'm, I'm quite ignorant on this. I like, I like that it's got examples. But if it's something that's been visited in detail already, I don't wanna, you know, reopen it.
Well, first of all, big difference, this is policy and that was an ordinance. So, um, it was on the docket, probably in the fall, maybe three years ago or so. There was a lighting ordinance, um, uh, that would apply to residential areas. And the council, even though they approved it for the docket, when they got the ordinance from the Planning Commission who recommended it with amendments, they didn't want to go there because they hadn't had a public process. So it was kind of like, hmm, why did you put it on the docket if you didn't want to have a public process? So anyway, it did not get passed. But, um, that was an ordinance and, and this is just a policy setting up the, um, you know, the possible need to look at these types of s- situations going forward for people living anywhere. All neighborhoods. And, and that was consistent with what Kim Lee Horn tells us is in the multi wa- multi planning, multi county planning policies. These types of pollution, um, should be addressed according to them. So for consistency, I thought we should have it here um, without restriction.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Seeing done, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Chair Regan.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
And Commissioner Rashiis.
Yeah.
Motion passes six-one.
Okay.
Thanks for considering these, these amendments tonight so that I could explain them. Thank you. And Adam, I'm sorry if I didn't understand your directions in the email were specifically for that purpose. So thank you very much.
Okay, so the question now is do we proceed with discussion of the findings? And if we do, which findings will we discuss and which do we want to avoid? Or do we want to just proceed with all the findings? What's the consensus of the group? Victor.
Again, I'm gonna go back to a conversation that we had probably over an hour ago. My understanding of that conversation that we had with Adam was we're adopting a working document. Um, and so I'm, I'm happy to adopt the, the, the document as it is tonight and then continue to edit and add to it if necessary.
Carolyn.
If that's a motion, I will second it.
Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a
Not a motion. Okay.
Yeah, let, just trying to see what the consensus is here on, on proceeding, but it sounds like you're in agreement.
I mean, yeah, I feel like it seems to me that that it would all do everyone some good to look at it a little more carefully and study it more carefully. Study it in consideration of the comments that people have gotten today and, you know, previously. And, um, uh, continue to work with it. It, it's not critical when it gets adopted, is my thought.
Okay. Uh, Kate.
Yeah, I'd like to, my opinion stands that I'd like to request that we table discussion until staff have had an opportunity and planning commissioners have had the opportunity to, um, read staff's metric, matrix of public comment. And, um, how staff has responded to them based on laws and policies.
So how does that?
Adam's planning to put together a matrix of the public comments. And I understand that matrix would indicate more than one column. And that there would be a staff comment column about, just like you would with a SEPA, uh, envir- SEPA public comment, you know, matrix. You would, you would say what the public comment was, um, what relevant policies were and whether or not staff was able to address the comment. It doesn't need to be highly detailed. Um, it could even be a yes, no, the comment was, was addressed, but I think it's important to have this conversation. Um, the conversation about all of these really in the context of the policies, um, that are relevant to the public comments.
So what I hear you saying is we shouldn't adopt a working document. We should simply keep working with it, w- with the matrix once we get it.
I, I, I'm with Victor. I have no problem adopting a working document. Um, and moving forward, I, I don't want to debate the content of the working document until we've had a chance to see staff's matrix of public comment and the relevant policies.
Okay.
I think it would be very non-productive to do so.
Okay. Adam.
A quick question of clarification for findings. Are we, it is, are, are tho- are those survey results and like public email comments, are those automatically included as like an appendix to our findings? Is that something we can suggest adding before, you know, by that June third deadline?
Um, it is something that you could propose adding as an attachment to the findings.
Okay.
A little bit duplicative because those comments are already in the record. And so usually what you would do at that point, so the next Planning Commission bill that includes that matrix will include um, the, a copy of those comments just to get them into the record. So you could refer to that Planning Commission bill. Um, and instead of in, including it as an attachment.
Okay, got it. That, that clarifies. Thank you.
Uh, Victor.
Sorry, old hand.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that there is a consensus to adopt this as a working document with discussion to be continued, but no discussion tonight. Is that fair to say?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, that's been moved and seconded, uh, Angie.
Well, I'm just trying to understand what the purpose or value is of adopting it as a working document now.
I'm not sure either, frankly.
So I, I don't understand why we're taking an action if we don't even understand what we're taking an action around or how it moves us forward.
So as, as the person who made the motion, when we originally talked about this, I was also unclear as to what adopting these findings meant. And what the explanation that was given by Adam was effectively, it's a working document that can still be modified, edited, and, and all that. That was the original intention. And if that was the original intention, I'm happy to move forward with it. I, I I, I take into account Kate's, uh, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Cuse's uh, concerns. And, and I think they need to be addressed and they probably should not be addressed tonight. Um, if, if the original intent was to adopt this and, and then continue to work on it, happy to do so. If we don't think that's productive and we just want to continue to work on it, I'm happy to do that as well. Um, either one moves the ball forward, kind of moves us along.
Okay, we've had a motion that's been made and seconded to adopt this as a working document. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing done, let's, uh, call the roll.
Chair, I'm gonna repeat the most motion just for my own clarification. I have a motion by Commissioner Rashiis, so that seconded, excuse me, by Commissioner Boatsman to adopt the staff recommended findings in PCB twenty-four dash thirteen, Table Two as a working document. Okay. Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Vice Chair Regan.
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Rashiis.
Aye.
And Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Motion passes four-three.
So Adam, is there anything else that you have to present tonight regarding the, either the findings or any of the other material?
Uh, no, that wraps it up, uh, for me. We'll just, uh, point on taking up the Transportation Capital Facilities and Utilities element, uh, next week. And I'll get the, uh, comment matrix out, um, as well.
Okay. So now we move on to other business. Uh, is there a deputy director report?
I do not really have a report tonight. I think we've already talked about the dates of the next two meetings pretty extensively, and that's really all I had to say.
Okay. Um, if there are any planned absences for future meetings, please advise Allison, Deb Estrada, and me by email. Uh, no need to announce them at meetings. Any, anything else for the good of the order? Carolyn.
I, I didn't get a chance to thank, um, Commissioner Gels for his service. And I, I really appreciate working with you in the last year, Chris, and and, uh, you know, really appreciate your emphasis on, on bringing climate into many of our deliberations. So thank you very much. And thank you, Chair. Thank you for, for serving and getting us through this, this evening.
Thanks, Carol.
So far.
You're almost there.
Commissioners, the next meeting is Wednesday, June five at six P M. There being no other business to come before the Planning Commission, the time is now nine fourteen P M and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder, please stay on screen until staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us.